As a work session, we would ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices. Just as a matter of note, Councilor John Waters and Rapp should be here shortly. So, we'll go ahead and get started. Moving into our agenda, item A, amendments to Burlington City Code. This time we'll recognize your children's assistance city terms.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We have amendments proposed to board for chapters on our city ordinance. This started out as an exercise in amending chapter thirty-six with the traffic parking ordinance, getting ready for the new software that came to develop for parking tickets. And from that discussion, we also looked at other chapters that needed slight tweaks, so things added to, and we ended up with four different chapters that weren't needed. So, to get started, chapter two, we are proposing, this is an addition to it. It will be two dash twenty-four. This gives the city council the authorization to adopt a schedule of fees annually, which would apply to departments throughout the city. Right now, there's a provision in the UDO that applies to planning and development, but not for the other departments throughout the city. So, this would serve to give you that group of authority annually. So, this will be a part of the ordinance. Chapter six, this is our animal ordinance. We found a typo in six dash forty-one. The way it's personally written, it says that the charter will hold on to an animal that's there on a straight hold for seventy-two days. You do not hold animals for seventy-two days, you hold them for seventy-two hours. So, this is being amended just to correct that typo. While we are in chapter six, we thought it was a good idea to reference the new noise ordinance that went into effect this past summer, just to let folks know where to look if they're wanting to know about barking dogs, et cetera. So, we just added the crossroads to the new noise ordinance in chapter six. Chapter sixteen is our chapter for junk abandoned and rent vehicles. There has been a pattern of vehicles parked in the roadway that are either junk, abandoned, or rented, which is the jurisdiction of the enforcement of law enforcement. Sorry, dear. I forgot to put it back. Keep going. So, if there's a vehicle on the street, the process is it gets tagged, and the owner has seven days to move that vehicle, plus for the bag of law enforcement. So, then the owner takes that vehicle and moves it into the driveway. Well, that satisfies a violation for law enforcement, but it creates a problem for code enforcement. Because code enforcement enforces what happens in private driveways, yards, law enforcement handles streets and roadways. So, we looked at chapter sixteen to try to eliminate that back and forth that's happening. Because at the end of the day, neighborhoods are still having to look at the same junked car that's just jumping from the street to the driveway, back and forth, getting around law enforcement in the streets and code enforcement in the driveways. So, we've set out with chapter sixteen to try to eliminate that. The first sections were done to just change some of the definitions to make them more aligned with the state statute. And then these sections, sixteen dash three, four, five, six, and eight, they were amended to give both law enforcement and code enforcement the authority to deal with these vehicles in both the roadway and on private property, so that you don't have this switching going on back and forth, back and forth. Also, in our current code, when law enforcement tags a vehicle, the owner has seven days to move it. When code enforcement tags a vehicle, they have fourteen days to move it. So, you've got this seven-day, fourteen-day. So, we changed it to where code enforcement is the same. It's seven days to move the vehicle once it's been tagged by either law enforcement or court enforcement. We also added civil penalties to this, found in sixteen dash fourteen. And then sixteen dash fifteen is a brand-new section that adds penalties for repeated violations, because there are certain people that just keep their vehicles in the roadway or the driveway. So, this, all these amendments were done to try to eliminate the junked cars in the neighborhoods. Any questions on sixteen or four on the phone?
Yes, we have one here.
That question asked me in my head, and it's sort of way up.
Yes, I do have a question. So, in thinking of this, if the car is, let's say, can't pass inspection, and it's in their driveway, would that be an issue with code enforcement saying, hey, you have fourteen days to fix it, find out what's wrong with it, or remove it?
You have to look at the definitions, and just a vehicle that does not pass inspection does not need the definition.
Okay, great. Because I just want to make sure that people who are struggling and may have, you know, when that light comes on, there could be several different things wrong with their car. What if it's five thousand dollars and they just can't move it, you know, fix it financially? Or we're gonna then cost burden them more with saying, hey, you don't have your registration, it's on the side of the road, they put it in their driveway, and then it's still an issue?
It's not because it doesn't fit the definition.
Perfect. Didn't we have the same problem with houses many years ago? They couldn't pay because they didn't have the money, and we did what?
Yes, we did. That's the thing. It was all to itself, because the owner ended up moving anyway, and sold it.
And then one died. And then one died.
Correct.
Yes.
That's right.
I took that. Perfect.
Chapter thirty-six is our traffic ordinance. And again, we, some of these ordinance has typos in there. We have not updated the amount of fines for parking tickets since the nineteen-eighties. And of course, with the purchase of a new software, we look to try to make the changes that will go hand-in-hand with the new software. So, I'm just gonna hit some highlights. There's about thirty-some pages in your packet with all of the changes. Didn't want to read them worth the word tonight. So, for some of the highlights, we've added a public safety exception to bicycles and motorcycles. We also added street takeovers to the ordinance that addresses street racing, as a provision, obviously. Sections one oh three and one twenty-one, these address schools and school zones. So, we added a section that includes protection of all pedestrians in school zones, not just children, like your crossing guards and mental adventure. Also, we added Cummings and Williams High Schools and the Burlington School. We added them to the table that's found in the ordinance, because they already have the signs there with the school zones, but they weren't in the table. So, we added them to the table. Thirty-six dash one forty-five deals with what we call the storage of vehicles on city streets. There are some garages, used car lots, that are using the city streets to park either vehicles that they're working on or vehicles that they have bought at auction and they just haven't moved on to their lot yet. And it's causing a lot of problems. So, we made some amendments to one forty-five to further define the issue of storage and to make it very clear that these owners need to work on their vehicles in, within their lot and not use the city streets for that purpose. Sections seventy-two, one thirty-nine point two, one forty-four point one, one fifty-four, and one fifty-five. These are the current ordinances that address penalties within chapter thirty-six. What we've done is we've all of the penalties into a new section, which is thirty-six dash one sixty-seven. We left violations for handicap parking in fire lanes where they were, simply because we followed the maximum fine amount in the state statute. So, we left them to stand alone. Everything else, we moved into a new section. And under that new section, it says that the amount of fines would be determined every year by the city council on the schedule of fees. That way, if you want to change the fees of parking tickets, you can do it annually without having to rewrite ordinances. Thirty-six dash one sixty, so the new software that's being developed. There's an ordinance that applies to each violation. For example, thirty-six dash one sixty-seven will be the violation that an officer will give for a warning. And then for the first ticket, it'll be thirty-six dash one sixty-seven point one. That's the first ticket. And then one sixty-seven point two is going to be the second ticket within twelve months. One sixty-seven point three will be the third, and so on. That's how we've broken it down, and that's what is needed for the software. That way, the officers can put in the ordinance, and it's going to spin out the right fine that goes with it. We also added thirty-six dash one seventy-two, that's a brand-new ordinance. And what that does is it gives the police department the authority to tow a vehicle that has three outstanding unpaid tickets within the previous ninety days.
Has the software not been created at this point?
We actually had a demo with it today. They have built the first part of it based on the noise ordinance that we adopted this past summer, and they rolled out a demonstration of it this afternoon. So, they are, it is being developed.
Is this the same thing we talked about a year and a half ago?
Yes. This is, this is what it takes when you have to create the software to be able to match it up with the others.
I thought that software had been purchased already.
It might have been purchased, it might have been made.
And they said today that there is no other city in North Carolina that's using this software. So, they are building this for us.
Wouldn't be nice, because we haven't collected much in ten years.
You could be an inexperienced candidate, Ryan, from the board.
Yeah, we'll sit on the sideline and see how it goes, but I'll be surprised.
None of the proposed amendments to any of the chapters have any criminal penalties. All of the penalties for everything we're proposing are civil penalties or fines. These were amendments require a public hearing, but they do not require two readings because of those criminal penalties. We're proposing January sixth as the night of the public hearing and adoption. And the effective date for all the ordinances will be upon adoption.
Any questions or...
Not for me.
Bob has the... No, I just want one quick question. We still, we still pretty much preserve right under one sixty-eight, one seventy-five to have an injunction to relieve, but we have a real tough problem going. It's just not, not that it's a vehicle, because of the statute. I figured it is. Where do we stand on cars without tags? Is that somewhere in the ordinance?
It is. It's in, it's in chapter sixteen. You have to look at the definition. So, you have an abandoned motor vehicle, you have a hazardous motor vehicle, and you have a junked motor vehicle. And then you have to look at the definitions of what owes you the fare. And we amended it to follow the state statutes. Now, our definitions mirror the definitions down within the state statute. So, if you're talking about a vehicle that does not display a current license plate, which is what you're talking about, that's under the junked motor vehicle. So, a junked motor vehicle, the definition, it's an abandoned motor vehicle. So, you have to go back and see what the definition of an abandoned motor vehicle is. An abandoned motor vehicle is a vehicle that's left upon a street or highway in violation of a law or ordinance prohibiting parking. It's left on property under operated by the city for longer than twenty-four hours. It's left on private property without consent of the owner for longer than two hours. Or it's left on any public street or highway for longer than seven days, or is determined by law enforcement or code enforcement to be a hazardous to the motor in public. So, that's step one. You have to have something in that category. And then you have the second, which is under junked motor vehicle, that also does not display a current license plate. So, not having a current license plate on its own isn't triggered by it. You have to have something in the abandoned to carry paperwork with you to add to the junk.
And that way, you can find out if it's not covered. Is that correct? You make sure the owner's home, or make sure the owner, wherever house it is at, that they have given permission for that vehicle to be in their driveway without a tag. What it sounds like. You have to have permission from the owner of that residence.
They have the ability to be able to look it up.
They can run the tag, and that's going to pull back to the current of record owner pursuant to the DMV, where the DMV has a record.
He was saying it did not have a tag.
Like, no tag at all?
Because they can't get it fixed, you don't have the current registration, maybe they took the tag off, or maybe they had lapsed an insurance and took the tags back to the DMV like you're required to do. So, it's just sitting, he's just saying if a car is just sitting in a yard, assuming, Ronnie, and it does not have a tag on it.
Agreed.
Not on the side of the street, not on city property.
In the driveway.
In the driveway.
I believe people can run them in, so they can still find out the owner.
I go by one every day.
And I think, I think that the other part about it, you know, knowing, knowing how the officers respond and how code enforcement responds is they do go talk to the people who live there, and they do ask about the vehicles, and try to figure out the basis for why it's there as opposed to just jump to conclusion. So, there are other parts of the ordinance that have to be investigated to make sure it lines up.
But if they're the owner of that vehicle that's on their property, they're fined.
If all it doesn't have is a tag.
It would get run from our tags on. No tag is our only conversation at this moment. No tag. I'm just gonna say, I just don't want to make sure, and I'm glad Ronnie reiterated, I just want to make sure that people who are having a hard time, you know, with insurance right now, we know how the rates are going up, we know there's a lot. I just want to make sure, I'm glad it's no criminal charges regardless to any of them we're speaking of. But for a person that's just struggling to figure out how to fix that light or how to get their tags or whatever the issue is with registration, but as long as that vehicle is parked in their own driveway, there's not a ticket or, they won't be tagged for it.
That's correct.
I've never had a tag on my vehicle, so. He's had a foreign vehicle.
That goes back about thirty years.
Probably forty. Any other questions? Just for one clarification, we've got everything on the noise ordinance housed in one location. But that's why we went through.
That's what you did.
And all you did is move the reference, so this, this was put in the same spot.
Cross reference.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So, that will be on the January sixth agenda, is that what? Very good. Thank you for that update. Next, item B, this appointments to advisory boards and commissions, specifically the Burlington Elementary and Port Forty. At this time, we'll recognize John Hearn and our public information speakers. Steven, John.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Thank you. Coming for you, I'd like to, every now and then, about another board and commission appointment. The Airport Authority is a little different than the other boards in a couple ways. One is that it is, they go for four-year terms, and as opposed to the regular boards and commissions that end, the terms end in June thirtieth, these terms end December thirty-first. So, as we've come in the past, we're coming to you in December to review appointments to the board and commission, to the Airport Authority. There are three current seats that are, that are essentially with the vacancies in December thirty-first. Two are City of Burlington seats, and one is a joint City of Burlington-Alamance County seat, meaning that once the City of Burlington appoints that member, it then goes to the county commissioners for final appointment. So, there are two people who are applying, two of the current members are applying for reappointment. One is Keith Hall, who's applying for the joint Alamance County City of Burlington seat. And the second is, the second is, Sam Powell is applying for the City of Burlington seat. And then we have had, in the past year, we've had two applicants for the entire year for the seat of, for the Airport Authority, one of which was Andre Alson, who was appointed to the traffic commission in August. And the other one is our current mayor, Jim Brothers, who is now applying for the City of Burlington-Alamance County on the Airport Authority. And I, if I have here any questions you may have, and how you perceive it, would you like us to consider tomorrow if the appointments meet your needs?
I think the way it was explained to me is there's individuals stepping down twelve-thirds of the line. Is that right, Dan?
That's correct.
So, I was approached about having an interest into the event. My servant said I would serve, so I'll refrain and let the council have the discussion.
Question on the one, according to the county, would we like a recommendation that the county approved to join?
I would agree, I'm not entirely, that seems a little different than other ones. It's a joint appointment, truly, so it's not really...
Not a joint.
It's, they're both, it's not private, yeah.
I think you both have agreed, yeah, personally. You've all had to sit back and vote it a couple times.
Right. It's not like the other ones where it's an actual, actual county seat that we advise on. This one seems to be a total joint one, right?
Okay, so we will go ahead and point and present that to the county, Ron.
Yeah, I think they've already, they have already...
Approved it.
I'm not sure exactly, but I think so. I've gotten them, their county clerk sent me this application saying, presented to you guys.
Got a question, but I can admit that, so the county, after you all approve tomorrow night, the county, the next county meeting will follow suit and approve also.
I'll have a problem putting it on, because... You got three people, three people applying, so I think we've got four of them down. Enough people applying, you haven't got something that you're adding to the city.
Any other discussions on that? Thank you, John. Moving on, item C is twenty twenty-six, city council meetings scheduled. This time we'll recognize Bob Patterson, City Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Traditionally, in December, we adopt a council meeting schedule for the upcoming year. And as you know, typically, we meet the first, the third Tuesdays for council meeting and the first Monday of the month for a work session. So, that is what the basis of the schedule is, is a few variations. In August, we shift the work session to the third Monday due to national timeout and cancel that first meeting, and then you could have a national timeout celebration on this morning. September shifts the work session to the third Monday, better align with other meeting dates. November third has a start time of seven-thirty due to the election day. And December has one work session and one council meeting at the first of the month due to the holidays, not having a second council meeting. So, that would be on the agenda for approval at the second meeting tomorrow night for the new council to drop that.
So, that's just adopted the preliminary schedule. If the council that comes in wants to make any changes, it's as simple as that, isn't it?
Just like we did with tomorrow night's meeting?
Yeah.
Y'all did that in the last meeting? I don't know if they've been floated by any members or not, but you can look at the schedule if you want.
Yeah, we've made adjustments throughout the year for various reasons, so nothing to be different for that simple, but it plays with the council.
You just want to have, you should have, yes.
Well, that's what we need. Oh, man, that's twelve, about a twill. Did you text him to get the word? I wanted him to know it, baby. He's really happy with it.
All right, any comments on the proposed schedule? And we'll leave it up to future council committee changes or alterations. Okay. Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to item D, twenty twenty-six, fee schedule changes. This time we'll recognize our chief provincial officer, Peyton Reese.
Thank you, Council, for being the opportunity to be here. This is our annual fee schedule changes, which will take effect on January one. All the fees have been included in your pockets for you, and if you have any questions, each respective department head or attendants are here, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
I got a question, Mayor, in terms of, and how, is it on the record thing? I know, are the record folks pretty much in agreement with this?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We had to go through and make sure that their cost, both through the calories and their time, are properly calculated.
Okay, so it's, it's, no, we keep, they're keeping up with the market by being on our system.
Yes, sir, that's good.
And I found something that was pretty interesting here, where I think the fee that was too low. And that's right away from this. It said, city is being pulled into dispute with property owner due to contract that's working in the right way. I think, I think it'll be a higher rate to get out that argument, but I'm guessing. But anyway, I, I thought that was interesting, and maybe this, this a common occurrence, I guess. You know, getting out there on. I, I don't know. Well, anyway, it's, it's hard to do for nowhere, the right way with a lot of things anyway, so.
So we ran into it where some older flats were not correct. So even, well, we've been trying to.
So these are venture through engineering department, and they're primarily for other utilities or installing their facilities in the right way?
Mimo says generating a lot of interaction with our staff as well as theirs trying to correct issues that they sometimes created out in the field or perceived or created.
So Bob, you're saying something, these changes there are just making.
Yeah, it was just a little lady.
That's my life's business.
But I did have a lot of comment, and I've, I've spoken with Amy about it, that you'd be, of course, you don't do pump stations every day, but just looking at their figures, what, you know, and, and Amy got something on the low side, is that we've been doing a lot, we've been doing a lot of work, and taking a lot of time, and I'm charging for it. I'm just glad to see that we're doing it for a station. So if you, if you estimate the hour, what would it cost you if you just planned, even one of us?
It's usually, you know, for the larger lift station, it's going to be a day at least for more than one staff, because we also have water resources reviewing the plans, Travis is going to be doing the actual upkeep and maintenance, and then you might go back to the board several times so that they, you know, extensive.
So I, I think it's entirely correct. I read along, read along on that, and I saw that, you know, the B seems off the I, but when you get to thinking about it, it's really still a bargain, but anyway, you know, that, that's a comment that I have, and I, and I looked through all of the civil penalties and all this other detail. I think that's going to really be a big help, you know, with the software, called once a year. And you don't have to go in and do individual ordinances, you know, that, that's a big improvement, so that's just going to make it easier down the road, particularly people in enforcement, in public enforcement, police, and it's just going to be much easier. You know, like you said, you know, getting all the ordinance, a couple things, you know, in one place where we have to go about four or five different ordinances, that doesn't worry you out, but again, that's all I have there.
Municipal fee services across the state vary widely. You'd be surprised to see on the small communities how expensive their fee structures are. You ask that question to the administration of the council, they'll tell you that he read it. And it's the way to try to correct some issues that have been on in the past, but it's amazing how these fee schedules vary from place to place across the state. A lot of depends on what it's allowed, a lot of depends on past history, but it's, it's been pretty fascinating, like usual, I'd say. Any other questions?
Just to follow up, Mr. Ward, on the sewer lift stations, we only have three in our system. Um, the last one was installed in, I believe, about two thousand and four, two thousand and five. We currently have two that are being added, and that's where we really noticed the staff time to, it's not a frequent, um, a frequent charge, but there is when, when the need arises.
But it is, it's good to have it in place, you know, it's going back to just like, you know, two people, but after two days, that's a pretty good chunk of staff time, really, to be honest. But I'm glad it's in place, really, so.
So we ask if there are any other questions for this to be concluded on, considering what's in the market.
Everybody can do that, do it. All right, thank you, Peyton. Our last item, item D is city manager's report. We'll recognize city manager Bob Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics procedures for council meeting, the two council meetings tomorrow. Um, so for the first meeting, which will be held here at six o'clock, doors will open at the municipal building at five thirty. And then the entrance is through the front entrance at Lexington Avenue. And so then the meeting will be conducted. And once that's completed, the joint staff and Mr. Ward, Mr. Bigelow will proceed over to Cummings High School. The doors there will open at seven PM for the public. And it's in the high school auditorium, and there will be signage kind of directing, and some staff there to direct people to the correct entrance. And then that meeting will start at seven thirty, provided the first meeting is done on time enough to get everybody there, or the, the way to start, so to get everybody in place. And then that meeting is to set up the staff and over the flooring and set up the stage. Looks, looks really nice. We have the AV equipment set up and work with the school system to get the, the internet connection and whatnot. So we believe all the logistics have been worked out and in place and ready for the.
Good. Any questions on that?
Um, and I have one other thing. The mayor asked me to follow up on an email that he received regarding white flag homeless shelters in Burlington. Unfortunately, there was a homeless person that passed away over the holiday weekend that triggered some social media chatter. So white flag shelters are permitted in Burlington through our Unified Development Ordinance, and there's a procedure. They're allowed in all zoning districts. And the white flag typically is available when temperatures drop below thirty-five degrees or above ninety-five degrees. A particular location can be operated, I believe it's a hundred and fifty day dot a year. We have posted information on the website outlining those procedures. If the, any facility does still need to meet the building code and fire code requirements.
Is there any limitations on the type of buildings? Or is this geared more for, like, we commonly think churches, nonprofits?
Yeah, they have to meet, per the, the building code, what are called type A two and A three structures, which are typically assembly places like churches, certain types of, of businesses. And, and the type of structure also plays into that role. They have to meet certain requirements, which are listed on our, our handout, our faculty, they have to include like fire alarms, egress has to be code compliant. There has to be elimination. The sprinkler system isn't necessarily required, but all of these have to do with providing life safety to protect the occupants. And they are, each of the facilities are limited to a maximum capacity of twenty.
Twenty. No matter how large that space is, that's.
So is there a permit required?
And yes, there's a permitting process that would go through our inspections and fire code.
So they need to be proactive and come to the city to make sure we're.
If, if there's a facility that's operating that hasn't gone through that process, then they would be asked to cease their operations until it was determined that they went through that process and that.
Based on history, is there, is that process lengthy to apply for that permit, the lengthy process, or?
Well, it's not that lengthy process, but they do have the, you know, the, it's there with the building code, the code, that they have to meet, and we're charged with enforcing it in our jurisdiction. And if you don't have much leeway, either they make it or they don't make it, one of the other.
But the process for you coming in and asking for the permit, deciding after the permit, and going through the process, you guys checking it, coding, the ordinance checking it, and making sure the building is at code and stuff, that process for that permit?
Well, I can't tell you exactly how long it would be, but I can imagine. You gotta get on, you know, fire department's gotta get out there to look at it. Inspection's has gotta get out there to look at it.
The concern I have is, it's weather, weather's not always predictable at everybody, but weathermen don't even do it right. But if, if we have an abandoned structure that's very rapid, you know, how quick can we mobilize to be sure?
If, if you have an entity that wants to get on and run with this facility, it's.
So they can go in and free.
Go for it. Yeah, do it. No way, no way to, you know, to it's.
But.
Thank you for reiterating my, my other question.
Appreciate that. That's the critical piece.
Yes.
And I know we have worked with, David, I know we've worked with a couple of individuals that are trying to create safe space for individuals. We've been working with the UDO and how to create not only an environment that can house the homeless, but also house them in a safe and constructive manner, because you've got lots of variations. So you're working with a couple of individuals on that now, correct?
Correct.
James, we're, you know, we're pretty much involved.
Is it coming back to council team? I remember, speaking of it, I hadn't heard anything, I think it was last winter, or the end of this past winter in twenty twenty-four, we were briefed on it. Is that coming back to us pretty soon?
I'm sure it will. And Jamie's coming forward with some UDO changes to boot to try to facilitate these. But they still have to meet building code. Wherever you go, you're going to be, they're going to be stuck trying to, you know, make sure the building code is there as well as the fire code.
Well, that's, that's a non-negotiable.
That's right. That's, that's the bottom line, too. And some of these individuals don't like that answer. You know, but it's something that they don't have the ability to change, only that's done in the state legislature.
My concern is only the children, as I stated before. When you bring in these, also the, some of the unhoused people coming in with children, like, how do we mix them? It's just my concern, my safety concern, more specifically for the children. Adults are adults, right? If they're at house, they can come in and get there, you know, but children, how do we make sure that they're also bringing in children in this facility? How do we make sure they're safe? People are going to do this, making updates and changes, and allow for them to bring children in with them.
That would be more on whoever's operating the facility, as opposed to the city. We're not taking that sort of stance, I don't think, from the standpoint of actually making sure that they qualify as a right shelter, white flag shelter, they do, the owners.
But the white flag is separate from what we're sticking up, because the white flag is, yeah, that is fine.
Yes, you're correct. That's what he was regarding was something that's transitional.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, that one's been one that we've, we've started working on. It's a little more complex than I think we originally thought. And as we dug into it, trying to figure a caveat that we could make it happen, but it is in the works, and I know that David and Jamie and others with code enforcement inspections have been involved in it, so I would think that would come to the new council committee, so. May I ask you this? In terms of code, worst case scenario here, let's just say that all this is picked for good reason. People are trying to produce housing for people who need it. To be very honest about it, cut all the other laundry stuff around from here, but that's what, that's what you're trying to do. But, you know, at what point in time, when you go into an older facility, especially have older electrical wiring, other concerns in there, it, it, where do, again, it's about the building inspections and our inspections, they still have to inspect those facilities to, to the law it sets, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, our, the codes are just building required, so our intent is to make them safe for the folks that need this out.
But it needs to meet a certain minimum requirement.
That's correct.
So if this, if this facility is probably on, let's say, the wall's gone and bobbled, and there's, it happens to be unfortunately an issue or a fire there, where's the liability to go back to?
Great question.
Is the liability to come back to the city, to the owner, to the person who's running the facility itself?
Great question.
He's going to be enforcing the fire code, okay? And what you described is there's probably a problem with electrical, either inspections is going to pick it up, or he's going to pick it up, and it's not going to be used, that facility won't be used for that purpose until that problem is prevented.
Listen, if something happens, okay, in the meantime.
Well, uh, that's, that's, in the meantime.
What happens if, if an accident explodes?
Okay, but, but it's been through inspections.
We made the inspections.
Okay, and the question is, do we do what we were supposed to do as far as enforcing the building code and the fire code? And if it is, you know, it doesn't mean we won't get sued, because we always get sued, you know, everyone's going to look at it.
But if we do our job correctly, because if we go out and we don't do our job correctly, then lawsuits will.
That's why, that's why, that's my, that's my concern. And that's why the whole idea of some of these folks going ahead and not, not notifying, you know, you're asking, when do they start? Start now, you know, so that we have time to get out and do the work that we need to do in, in these inspections.
Be proactive.
And, you know, the problem is, is that many of these buildings do not meet the code, okay? And, but the, your problem is, if your owners or whoever's proposing to operate a facility, they don't like that answer. But going back to your concern or concerns about fire, that's what this is all about. It's safe housing, okay, transitional housing.
Which we currently do not have anything on the books that is zoned for transitional housing.
That's correct, and this, this, the boss can turn around and address that, Steve. Something's going to be coming your way here shortly.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Bobby, anything else? Beverly, anything for tomorrow's meeting? If there's no other comments, then we will. All right, we'll stay in the journey.
Thank you.